The meeting will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. Meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear in the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for a public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Michelle, if you would, introduce the first case before us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number PB 1509-1, upon the matter of request by Megan Mills for signage approval to replace existing signage and awnings on premises 620 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Mills. I'm a resident of 389 Bayview Road in Rochester, 14609, in the city of Veronaquay. I'm requesting approval for my signage, opening a Farmers Insurance Agency at 620 Titus Avenue, as she mentioned, and looking for both approval for my monument sign outside as well as the branded awnings above the windows.
Questions for the board? Start with Jay.
We had discussed this at the workshop fairly extensively, and the sign is, the monument sign, I don't think anyone really had an issue with at all, but there were concerns about the branded awnings, and I share those concerns. I think that the awnings should be just awnings and not have the logo on them. That was my only input into this. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I did have an opportunity to, I know one of the things that you guys mentioned at the workshop was to make sure that I brought a copy of the updated mock-up that shows the light fixture there, as well as, I did bring an example of the light fixture as well, if you're interested in taking a look at it, with the lumens as well.
Thank you. Oh, you got one for each of us. Great. Oh.
There's a couple of them, yeah.
I'll do that. Okay.
So that's the monument sign, like we mentioned, and then as far as the awnings, I do have the example of the color fabric, and you know, it's a little bit different in the picture versus the actual fabric in the example that I have, if you're interested in seeing that again. I'm happy to show that to you. One of the issues that you did present to me at the planning meeting was that you're concerned about the wear and tear of the awnings, which I went back to the sign manufacturer and talked to him a little bit about it. They do have a warranty. It's called Sun umbrella, which is the manufacturer of the actual awnings. They have a warranty of 10 years with full replacement if they break down or decompose or whatever during that time. So, you know, and my sign person said he's seen some up there, you know, for 15-plus years throughout the community that haven't, you know, worn down or anything like that.
So, you're proposing three awnings with the Farmers logo?
That's correct. So, two on each either side of the door, and then one on the other side of the building.
I wasn't at the workshop, but I do, I did get briefing on it. I mean, are you willing, there was some concern about the number, did you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to discuss the number of them. I understand that, you know, there's some concerns with the number of logos. I do believe that I do need signage on the building, one way, shape, or another, and I thought, based on, you know, that area, it needs to look nice, right? It needs to look like a professional space, and I don't think that a sign on the roof would be something that would look nice in that area. So, awnings were, you know, kind of a happy medium between, you know, the sign vendor actually proposed them to me. I thought it was a great idea because it's just, it's a little something different. So, I do believe that we need signage on the building, though.
Are you going to be the single, or the sole occupant of the building, or is it going to be a multiple tenant building?
It is a multiple tenant building. The front portion, which is where all of the awnings actually are, those would be all replaced by me, obviously, into that Farmers blue. And then on the side, there's currently a Nationwide agency, and she's actually moving out probably by the end of this year, and my understanding is that there's a bakery going into that area, or proposed bakery.
Are you just a tenant?
I'm just a tenant. I do have several examples that I also want to present you, nine of them within the area of different areas, or different, excuse me, businesses, especially national brands, that have several logos throughout their, on both a monument sign as well as the building. So, I did want to show you all, I brought three copies for you guys to pass around. Nationwide is the current one that's in the building. They have a monument sign out front, and they also have one on the building.
There's three copies of all of them.
Three copies of all of them together, yeah. So, Farmers Insurance, obviously, is a national brand. They do, you know, they are looking for us to have brand presence within the community, which is one of the reasons why I want both a monument sign as well as something on the building. And in fact, they have told me that they approve all of the logos that are on there, and to be honest, they're not looking to, you know, plaster a billboard out there. They're just looking to make a professional office appearance as well.
Jay, did you have any other questions?
Additional questions.
No, thank you. Rich?
You handed us this exterior freestanding sign, and it says, there's a picture of a light, and it says, "Sign to be illuminated on both sides by ground-mounted lighting provided by other." Do you have any documentation of what kind of bulb is going in there, how strong it's going to be, what the throw's going to be?
Yep, I have, actually, the actual light itself. Ground-mounted, obviously. Lumens would be 1160 lumens. It is LED, and the sign, or excuse me, the lighting place that I went to did suggest this for lighting that's not going to have a lot of spillage over from the actual sign.
Let me see that box.
Sure, absolutely.
Jay, did you tell us what 1160 lumens means, really? Could you, you know more than anybody about...
Well, I know something about lumens, but it's, that's not that big of a, that's not that strong. It's only a 13 watt output, so it's probably like a 100 watt bulb or less.
Okay. Rich, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Ray?
Yes. Ms. Mills, how are you?
I'm good, thanks, how are you?
We had a lot of conversation at the workshop, as you remember.
Yes.
And you showed me, actually, the Urbansky Insurance Agency.
Yeah.
Notice, sign, something on the building itself.
Yep.
Like we had spoken of.
Yep.
No awnings, et cetera.
Right.
Did you have the opportunity, if you remember, I recommended that at the time? Any opportunity to consider that?
So, I did. I mean, I think it would look awkward on the actual building.
Why?
So, when you drive up to that front of the building, I just feel like the, a big sign on the actual building would look strange. And that's one of the reasons why I didn't propose to you guys the roof-mounted sign, because I do have a picture of it, and I think it looks weird.
I will tell you, if someone, first of all, I wish you every success as Farmers Insurance, as an independent person doing business, trying to make a living.
Yeah.
I think perhaps Mr. Palukas and I are the only two on this board who do that.
Yeah.
I would recommend, however, did you read the HIP commentary?
I did, I just got it about two minutes before this meeting. Unfortunately, we had some email issues, and I understand that, you know, their concern, one of their concerns was that it might look like a billboard. It's not what I want it to look like, and if I may just pass this over to you, this is the mock-up of the original, the sign vendor actually highly recommended putting a rooftop sign on my building. I personally don't like the look of it, and I thought the awnings was a good compromise to make something a little bit less flashy, if you will.
Okay. Any other questions, Ray?
Sure.
No, Mr. Chairman. Head down to Bernie.
I have no additional questions.
Mary?
Yeah, I'm good.
Michael?
I rather, would like to stick by my original premise that an awning would be acceptable singularly out of the three that you propose. That was the only signage that I thought perhaps you might need in addition to the signage out front, but I'm certainly not in the business, but you've asked my opinion, and there it is.
This time, I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application, we do so at this time?
Good evening, I'm Ann Burns. I live at 199 Bellehurst Drive, and I'm here representing Helping Arundic quite plan for progress. We did comment, and I do apologize, Megan, because we did submit these comments a week ago. I'm, I, that's the reason we submitted them, to try and make sure you had plenty of time to see what we had to say. For the freestanding sign, as shown in the application, you know, we really think it's an attractive sign. It fits with everything that we have worked so hard to bring about in the neighborhood. We especially like that it's externally lit. That's something that we have advocated strongly for. In terms of the awnings, we really do think the branded awnings make the building look busy. We're trying to find a village feel here in this neighborhood. It sits right on top of a quiet residential street. You've got the Arundic quite United Church of Christ there, which is a nationally recognized historic church, and we really would like it to be more of a village feel in that section. We feel that this sign is close enough to the building. It's not far away, that that's adequate enough. We would ask the board to go with the freestanding sign and not the branded awnings. That would be our request. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this application?
Hi, good evening, Mike Nolan, 350 Kings Highway North, here tonight representing I-Square, and Megan and Brady came to us and kind of asked their opinion as, you know, stakeholders in the neighborhood, they wanted to, Steve Walther, their landlord, connected the two of us, and kind of went through what we thought, you know, and our ideas and our concepts and where we see the neighborhood going, and we did talk about a roof-mounted sign at one point, and we both agreed that it was probably going a little bit far, but the awnings, we are in favor of. I think that with the walking district and the way, the way it works, the monument sign works really well for the road traffic, but for the walking traffic, especially on the I-Square side of the road, I think the awning signs reinforce that message, and we want to see these guys do really good in business and be a good positive part of the I-Square area, and I'd encourage you to approve the application as they've submitted it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion. Mr. Chairman, we don't need any seeker for this, correct, or?
It's a type, it's...
It's a type 2, isn't it?
Right, correct.
I guess in looking at it personally, I don't see the net benefit to the one perhaps on the west side. I do think that there's some benefit to the two that bracket the door. I do think that that provides you a compromised position, too, that might satisfy the board. I don't personally agree that that creates too much, you know, visual clutter at that point, and I, only one person speaking in regards to this application, but I do think bracketing the door provides some presence and, you know, goalposts for people, in essence, to enter between. I think eliminating one or the other would additionally, would make it seem asymmetrical or, and, you know, so that western facade, I think, is a little bit on the side, and maybe doesn't provide any net benefit. I don't know if that's a viable compromise position to the rest of the board, but, I mean, that's where I think, in my opinion, is leaning.
Peter?
And board, I, I too agree. I think I, in second thought, I'd like the balance of those in the front. I would like to maintain on the west side of the building that kind of a residential street, the awnings would be nice, but signage doesn't, I don't know, I just, I don't see the sign there, but I'm willing to make the compromise to say the two in the front.
I agree.
Anyone else?
I fully concur.
Jay, is that something that you'd be willing to consider?
No, but you have enough votes, so you can consider it.
Rich?
I'm not in favor of any signage on the awnings.
Ray?
I'm not in favor of any signage on the awnings, and I'm also not in favor of, as depicted on the west side of the building, one awning branded, and the other not, and that's where I had recommended perhaps eliminate that and put a sign similar to Urbansky, something wood in between the two windows. So, I'm not...
So, you want to see a sign on the west side, you just don't want to see it on the canopy?
I do not want, it was a recommendation. It's up to them, but no. With the canopy signs, no.
Okay. I guess it looks like we'll...
Peter, do we have to ask the applicant if they're willing to change the application?
Yes, are you willing to change the application?
Yes. To the two in the front?
Yes. Okay. Type 2 action for seeker. Anyone willing to make a motion in regards to seeker?
We don't have to.
We don't need to. Excuse me, that's... All right, we're looking for final signage approval, with the caveat that the western most sign will be eliminated. Well, westernmost, the western...
Side of the building.
What?
The western side of the building.
Yes.
Yeah, got it.
Just the logo will be eliminated.
On the awning?
No, nothing on the west side.
You want no, no awning?
I don't care if they have an awning, but no sign.
Yeah, that's why I said the logo will disappear from, we're not saying no awning, we're saying no logo on the awning.
Yes. Yes, I think so.
Only four or three are going to have to make a motion.
Mary is going to make it.
So, I don't think those three will.
You think? Oh, I don't know if I know how to do this.
Just basically read back what it says there, with the, and then with the condition that the western logo on it will be eliminated. The western logo on the awning will be eliminated.
Okay, I'm making a motion to PB 1509-1, upon the matter of request by Megan Mills for signage approval to replace the existing signage and awnings on premises 620 Titus Avenue in an MUC mixed-use commercial district. Per board, to change, or to have the signage just over the awnings by the door.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
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 Motion carries four, approved, three, none, zero, absent. Thank you for investing in Arundic quite.
Thank you so much.
I do wish you the best, Ms. Mills, with your business. Sincerely, I...
Appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Mills, if I could just make a recommendation, you mentioned Sun umbrella is the canvas they use.
Yes.
Make sure you save that warranty.
Will do.
Because most boats in this area use Sun umbrella as a canvas material, and they're only in the water half the year, and there's not a lot of boats that make 10 years on their canvas.
Great, thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Michelle, if you could introduce the next...
Next item on the agenda is a town board referral, upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for Morgan Depot LLC, for a special use permit to operate a restaurant on premises 999 Eastridge Road in an M manufacturing district.
Mr. Chairman, before we start this application, I just want to understand exactly what we're voting on. We're just voting to say whether we like it or not, and this is going to come before us again anyway, after it goes through the town board, is that correct?
This is related to the special use permit?
Right.
That the town board has to contemplate, and so the town board asked the planning board for your opinion about granting the special use permit at this location.
They're going to have to come back before us for site plan approval?
They're going to be, they're going to be on the October agenda for site plan approval. So, you're not looking at the site conditions, you're looking at the use.
This is just a quirk in the Arundic quite law that dates back to a much prior time where restaurants in town of Arundic quite require a special use permit, and it can only be granted by the town board.
In any district, Peter, or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right.
It's the Blue Gardenia law.
In the manufacturing district, any restaurant needs town board special use permit, and in commercial district, it's over a certain seating size, needs special use permit by the town board, in addition to site plan approval by this board. And Ashley will correct me if I'm incorrect in any of that.
Really correct.
Seth?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Mike Montalto with Costage Engineering, offices at 217 Lake Avenue, here this evening on behalf of our clients, Morgan Depot LLC, Angelo and Gracia. We were before this board in the last year, year and a half for the redevelopment of the Depot Plaza, where we developed the, redeveloped Tops and the Sonic. We were also here for the special use permit associated with the redevelopment of the, or the development of the Sonic. As Michelle had indicated, we have made application to the planning board, formal application for site plan approval, and are looking forward to appearing in the coming weeks relative to that. We are talking about redeveloping approximately nine-tenths of an acre of the Depot Plaza, the portion of the site that is currently occupied by M&amp;T Bank. As part of the redevelopment of the Depot Plaza, we did subdivide the property to create different tax properties from a financing standpoint, so it does have its own, the subdivision has been filed. One of the questions, I think, that has come up is what are the, you know, the addresses? At the time of application, the assessor's office had not assigned formal tax ID numbers or property addresses yet, so the address we put on the application, since it's all under common ownership, was the previous address for the entire 16 acres of 999 West Ridge Road.
Again, I'm not sure if you can hear me, for the minute standpoint, from, without the microphone, but we're talking about the M&amp;T parcel.
Thank you. We're talking about the M&amp;T parcel bounded by the signalized intersection and the access drive for the gas station. This is approximately nine-tenths of an acre. It is its own lot, it's Lot 5 of the subdivision that I previously mentioned, will be, the plan is to remove the M&amp;T bank facility, remove pavements, redevelop the area, that portion of the site has approximately a 4,300 square foot Panera Bread facility. It'll have seating for roughly 102 patrons and exterior seating for 33, relative to the entire plaza. When we did the original applications, is under reciprocal access agreement for all the accesses, parking, et cetera. There's over 700 parking spaces associated with the project, even if you look at it from just the nine-tenths of an acre standpoint, depending on which, you know, whether you look at it for three seats per, you know, or what, a parking space per three seats, based on if you count interior and exterior, it's 45 parking spaces. If you do it based on square footage, it's 44. We've got 54 associated with that portion of things. There were existing area variances that were applied to the site relative, that were granted when we re-subdivided the property. They had to do primarily with lot coverage, because as, when we broke up the 16 acres, the plaza as an aggregate, you know, complied, but when you broke up only nine-tenths, which had, you know, the M&amp;T bank or the portion that was Sonic, some of the impervious surface areas were larger. We're not seeing a change in terms of front setbacks requiring area variances from that standpoint. I think as we get through the rest of the planning process and present all of Panera's signage package, there may or may not be with the menu boards or whatever, the need for area variances associated with that, similar as that it was with Sonic. We're not providing, we're not proposing any standalone monument signs, the existing plaza sign that says Tops or whatever remains. Any of the signage for this facility will be building-mounted, and then the menu boards and that form of items. At the time we made application, it was summertime, so we couldn't do traffic counts. Monroe County DOT has commented, that says they'd like to have a discussion, just like we did with the Sonic, where town staff and everybody gets together to review from a traffic standpoint. From a, I think, town board and use standpoint, we're confident with the daily volumes on Ridge Road, the traffic signal, and the rest of it, that even, you know, at a peak hour calculation standpoint, that we've got adequate capacity and timing to make changes, especially when you look at roadway counts are down, you know, in that entire retail corridor from what they were years ago at their, you know, at their peak. Panera Bread does not fall into the traditional fast food category from a traffic study standpoint. They have the drive-through, but it's more as a supplement to the dine-in experience or whatever, so it serves a whole different purpose, and when you look at the historical traffic data, it doesn't fall into the category of fast food, you know, high turnover with drive-through. So, you know, as mentioned, we did make formal site plan application. We do look forward to presenting, you know, the full detailed plans, going through landscape lighting. Landscape and lighting are in the same theme as, you know, the rest of the redevelopment of the plaza. I think, as you folks have seen, there's been some significant changes there relative to the Tops and the Sonic, and getting Uvar and medical, you know, office space in, you know, the balance of the plaza, and it's really kind of been a turnaround from the plaza. This is the next phase, and it's primarily geared by the, you know, traditional banking doesn't occur the way it did. You know, people aren't going to banks, branches aren't, you know, being common anymore, and the only guys who are building new ones are credit unions. There was a question relative to a kiosk that appears, you know, in one plan doesn't. There, we did some concept work with M&amp;T and Angelo and Gracia relative to the potential to have a kiosk. That's not a portion of this application. I believe M&amp;T is currently working with the owners of the plaza on potential other sites, you know, within the Ridge Road corridor to potentially relocate a branch. I believe they'd like to have a branch, branch presence in Arundic quite, only because when they look at how many they're going to remove and putting kiosks up as their main form of business here and there, they do have a model that says they'd like to find a location for another. that says they'd like to find a location for another, another branch, but it would be better suited than someplace other than, I guess, in the existing plaza. So, at this point, I guess I'd conclude my formal remarks and turn it over for any further questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
All we're, all we really want to say is whether we think it's a good idea to have a restaurant in the, if, if, or not, right?
Whether they, the town should consider allowing a restaurant to go in that location, yes.
Okay, so I don't have any questions, then.
No questions.
Ray?
No questions.
Anybody down here?
No questions.
This time, I'd like to open up to public input. No public input.
Not a public hearing?
That's right.
No public hearing?
The only thing I will say, maybe, if, if you have a surplus of parking in that part, and it's for the future, is that that 10 spots on the eastern most side, if they're really not necessary, and we are up against impervious, maybe we should eliminate that, I, we don't necessarily like to see extra parking, especially in light of the fact that you have that large plaza parking lot there, so, I think just backing out of that entry driveway is just dangerous if not...
Wouldn't we deal with that, though, Mr. Chairman, in the site plan?
Right, and I'm just giving them some advice for when the site plan comes before.
All right. He's getting them ready.
So at this point, I think we're willing or ready to give the positive referral, if I'm testing the temperature of the board.
Make a motion to, make a positive referral on the matter of request by Costage Engineering for a special use permit at 999 Eastridge Road.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries, hopefully you are successful with your...
Thank you for your time this evening.
...special permit, and hope to see you soon.
Be back in a few weeks, I believe.
Yep.
Hope so.
At this point, I think the only thing matter left is to review and approve meeting minutes.
And, Mr. Chair, these were revised from the workshop, and I did email them this morning, and obviously, nobody got them.
I didn't get them, no.
I didn't.
I was having trouble with my email this morning, so I apologize, I had to have IT come up and check it out, that's why, Ms. Mills didn't get her HIP comments either.
Okay.
So, my apologies.
Dan, I like the bullet points, or, I like the way they're written now much better, thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, I agree with that, and I think it's far more reflective of what was truly discussed.
Great.
You know, it was discussed in our workshop, it was tough, I think.
No, not at all, I don't mind it, it's all good.
I'll move approval of the minutes from the August 24th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seeing none, meetings approved. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.